...10, 2018, 7:00 PM. Please stand and hope, all members are present first, and please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
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 All in favor of approving the agenda is written, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, agenda is approved, moving on to recognition of students, staff, and public. First, we will have the Bloomington Police and Fire Departments and Alina Health EMS, going to emergency response exercise, which was held in August, and I'm going to call upon Rick Kaufman, Executive Director of Community Relations and Emergency Management.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, and our viewing public, it is a pleasure this evening to start tonight's meeting, the first of the school year, to publicly welcome and thank our partners who were involved in not only the planning, but the execution of a series of joint full-scale emergency response exercises of an active shooter event. Joining us this evening, to my immediate left, is Bloomington Police Chief Jeff Potts, to my right, Alina Health EMS, South Metro Division Manager Jeffrey Lannenberg. Next to him is Bloomington Fire Chief Uli Seal, and Bloomington Public Schools Health Services Supervisor Hannah Hatch. I'd also like to publicly acknowledge Bloomington Police Commander Damon Bitney, Bloomington Fire Assistant Chief Jay Forster, Emergency Management Consultant Paul McCullough, and our exercise evaluators Jeff Goldie, with Hopkins Public Schools, and Bloomington Police Sergeant Ben Calhoun. We also want to thank the more than 50 role players, that included district staff, Bloomington parents, current and former students, members of Bloomington Police Explorers, and school board members Dawn Stagoff, Nellie Corman, and Tom Bennett, for their time and dedication to providing a realistic scenario for the responding agencies and emergency response teams. While the likelihood of an active shooter event in a school setting is rare, the incidence of these tragic events continues to play out on school campuses nationwide. As such, the value and necessity exists for developing an integrated response with our emergency response teams at the school and district levels, as well as our first responders. The emergency readiness exercises, which were two sessions each night over the course of three evenings, served to train for, assess, practice, and improve our emergency response in a risk-free environment. The exercises provided our school and district emergency response teams the opportunity to test capabilities, familiarize personnel with roles and responsibilities, prepare for decision-making in a large-scale emergency, and foster meaningful interaction and communication with our participating organizations. The design team that began planning these exercises over a year ago, that collaboration alone provided a tremendous learning and relationship-building opportunity. As a member of the planning team, exercise evaluator, and observer, I'm very proud of the leadership and responsiveness of our school and district emergency response teams. Our leaders met and exceeded many of the objectives we established for these exercises, including a better understanding of roles, responsibilities, capabilities, and core contingencies among first responders and our emergency response teams. Coordination of an incident command and incident management response across all responder groups, initiating two-way communication as an essential component for effective emergency response, not only with our responders, but also between the schools and the district emergency response team, and vice versa, and then also role-playing communication to our parents and constituents. And finally, the employment of tactical emergency casualty care with our school nurses and health associates, under the guidance of Hannah Hatch. We are completing a final analysis of the evaluations in our debriefing notes, which will be shared with our emergency response teams, and will be part of revisions that we make to our current emergency operations and recovery plan. With that, I invite our partners to share a few remarks from their perspective on the emergency exercises, and we'll start with Chief Jeff Potts.
Thanks, Rick. Madam Chair, members, it was our privilege, or privilege to, and honor to work with the school district, the fire department, and our EMS partners on these training sessions. We learned a lot, thanks to the role players. I'm sure as a participant in this, you just got to see some things that were probably, while maybe interesting to be a part of, pretty scary if it were to actually happen. Our staff that participated came back with very high comments, or very good comments about the participants, the work of the school district, of course, our partners from fire and EMS. You know, we all are, I'm sure, in the same camp of hoping that this is an event we never actually have to respond to, but it's good to see that we have great partners, if it ever does happen. We are also in the process of kind of debriefing the sessions, and trying to figure out if there's any additional lessons to be learned from this. We're always looking to improve our plan, improve our ability to respond to these kinds of incidents, and again, it was a privilege and an honor to participate in this one again over the last couple of months. Thanks for having us, and thanks again to the folks in the board who participate as participants in those events.
Madam Chair, board members, again, I also recognize Chief Potts, as far as thanking us, or thanking, allowing us the opportunity to participate. Most of our staff that were included with this drill were newer academy paramedics, so they had an opportunity within their first year to actually practice a large-scale event. We thought things went very well, even with some of the design, let's see here, left hooks that occurred on the second night, but that's part of it. But the, one of our, one of our primary concerns is always, once we start a transport process with school, children, or anybody from the education system, the connection is really where these folks land, and as far as hospitals they go to, because that's, tracking is a big issue when it comes to some of these large-scale events. We felt we were very successful, especially with the unified command process and getting that information back to the school district, so the school district could actually move folks to the receiving hospitals. Otherwise, the three things that we do on every call, which is triage, treat, and transport, pretty much come into play on every call, this is just at a larger scale. So again, thank you for allowing us to participate, it was great training, well-attended, we kept it in-house primarily, so we could get as many of our folks through as we could in the, in the three nights that it was scheduled.
I'd echo many of the same comments. We always appreciate the opportunity to train, so we can be at our best when the real world is at its worst, so appreciate the opportunity.
I'll just echo what everyone else has said here, for health services, this, these exercises were a really valuable experience, because although we do deal with emergencies occasionally, we do not deal with mass casualties on a regular basis. So the triage and the treatment of these students and staff members in these exercises is a little different than what health services does on a day-to-day basis, so it was a really valuable learning experience for us. I had licensed school nurses and health associates participating in all the exercises, and they got the opportunity to practice being the staff member who's in the actual health office during a casualty, and being, being a health staff that would respond from a nearby school during a casualty like this. So it was a really valuable experience for them, and they got to learn too of when's their turn to help out and treat, and when it's their turn to step back and give it up to the emergency response personnel that arrive. And then, as was mentioned before, one of their roles that they started taking on was tracking our students, and where they were going, and what was happening with them, which was a really valuable role to take on that we don't do on a daily basis. So it was a great experience overall for everyone, and gave Rick and I a lot of things to think about and plan for in the future.
And now we open up to comments or questions.
Not being part of the group, but being a ham at heart, I've always wondered, you know, on TV, with this show, you know, in terms of all of the reality shows and different things like that, too, there's a lot of acting that goes on, but the seriousness of this, I guess, you stress that, you know, everybody's role, and everybody played a part, and they were all serious, and they did what they were supposed to do, including the casualties or whoever else, that would be good to hear.
Yeah, you know, the, I think, the first exercise of the first night, it was a learning experience for a lot of the role players, but we broke, and then we would reset for the second session, and at that time, and each, each night, we encouraged the role players to step it up, because the, as the planners, we wanted to challenge our partners, as much as our own response teams, and so I think that was a free license for all of them to really go for Emmy Awards, and, you know, one of our own, Anne Marie Terpstra, over the Transportation Department, probably deserves an Emmy Award, because her role-playing started from the time the exercise started, until we finally said, okay, we're, we're on a break now, you can, you can stop. And I think at one point, one of Jeff's teammates said, well, in real, in real life, we probably would be giving you a sedative. But I say that, and she was fantastic, all of our role players were fantastic, and I do believe the fact that they presented as real to world of what they would most likely experience, it challenged our partners as well as us to do the best that we could as well.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I can't have all of you up here in front of us without saying thank you, certainly to the staff, to all of the volunteers, but to all the first responders. We can't do it without you, and we appreciate everything that you do, so thanks a million for coming and practicing on our grounds, and as the chief mentioned, let's hope that we don't ever have to put this into practical use, but if we do, we'll be well-rehearsed.
I just want to say thank you, as role player, all three nights, it was quite the experience, and, you know, when I look at the pictures and you see the people there, it is very serious, some of those pictures have my daughters in them, so it's very serious just to even have to see them again there. So just thank you, thank you for your service. I do, I want to add a little bit of a thing about Anne Marie. I was in the ambulance with her, and I told her that they would give her a sedative when she was still, and she stayed right and roll, and she said, well, they can't give me that, they don't know what kind of medications I'm on, don't, don't give me anything. So she was never, never broke, even then, when I said, you know, they would just shut you up. She, she let me know that no way, she was not getting any medication either, so, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, I think we have some students, so I have a statement to read first, okay? A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So if you would like to come up and just say your name, your school, and the name of your teacher to the podium, if you'd like to do that, please.
Before the students speak, we may actually have another student that might want to come up to the podium and say hello.
I'm Oscar Floater, I go to Bloomington Jefferson, my teacher's name is Mrs. Storlein.
My name's Bernd Walzer, I go to Bloomington Jefferson, and my teacher's Mr. Storlein, best teacher ever.
So at the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda from any one of our administrative cabinet members that are sitting over here at the side, and so you can leave after an hour, you're welcome to stay for longer if you'd like.
Interesting.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any other business that needs to come before, anyone else want to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seen enough, we're going to move on to Part A. Is there a motion to approve Part A?
So moved.
All in favor of approving Part A of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, moving on to Part B. Is there someone that would like to read first?
Madam Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the attached wage schedule for athletic event workers for 2018-19, effective July 1, 2018.
Second.
Just a few words, we have 13 athletic programs, and they depend on community members stepping forward to fulfill roles at the athletic events, such as scoring, timekeeping, announcing, and judging. The rates in front of you are per event amount, and whoever fills the role, they'll receive those compensations. We're proposing a 2% increase over the current rates.
Okay, any questions?
Just, Madam Chair, just a quick one, do we know when it was last raised?
The last raise was back in 1415.
Okay, so it's due, all right.
All in favor of approving this, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, moving on to pathways to career and college update, I think that's Mr. Kaufman again.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board, tonight, we are excited to share with our, with all of you, and also for the first time publicly, in our viewing audience, the district's refreshed strategic plan that provides a clear vision of how we can improve our services to prepare students to thrive in this rapidly changing world. A graphic that you see on your screen now depicts the refreshed strategic plan, which is our vision of creating pathways to career and college, with the goal of helping every student envision his or her future and how to get there. Tonight, we'd like to share the work we're, some of the work that we are doing to produce and create, and share the message of our Pathways to Career and College Plan. I've come before you a couple times in retreat sessions, as well as before the board, last year, sharing with you our goal this year to roll out this refreshed strategic plan, which you did last school year, as well as to sort of embed it in a lot of the things that we're doing across the district. And tonight, joining me is Kate Martin, our manager of communications and marketing, to share some of the initial signature pieces of this work.
Hi, good evening. We're excited to start the year by implementing two key elements of the communications plan for the Pathways to Career and College. As you can see, the infographic has been refreshed to reflect the focus on career and college. The new posters are on display in schools and district buildings, and are available in English, Spanish, and Somali. The back-to-school issue of School Page's Community Newsletter features a pathway to career and college section, including the new infographic. The remaining four issues of School Pages this year will have information about pathways to career and college, and I'd like to publicly recognize our Community Relations colleague, Andrea George, who coordinates School Pages and who helped create the new graphic. We also created a video to help raise awareness about the pathways and career and college work that we're doing, and to illustrate the importance of helping students make informed decisions about their post-high school plans, so we have the video for you to view.
For generations, students and their parents have viewed a four-year college degree as the key to success. There was a wide gap in pay and prestige between jobs requiring a degree and those that did not. Experts call it the "college-for-all" mentality, and this myth that college is the only path to success has put many students on the wrong path. While a four-year college is the right choice for many students, you may be surprised to learn, 29% of students drop out of college without completing a degree. 21% take five or more years to graduate, and only half have completed their degree after six years. Of those students, only 28% are employed in their field two years after college. The traditional path of high school to college to career only works for about 18% of Minnesota students. The good news is, many in-demand careers don't require a four-year degree. In Minnesota, the employment outlook is seeing a major shift. Only 22% of jobs require a four-year degree. Many jobs that don't require a four-year degree pay a livable wage with opportunities for advancement. In some fields, employers are helping to pay for training and education. High schools in Minnesota are offering school-to-career pathways for students to earn certificates that help them get a jumpstart on a job that pays a livable wage, or to earn college credits. In Bloomington, we are helping students and parents to shift their thinking about college, careers, and success. We start working with students in middle school to match their interests and talents with potential career areas, then map the education and training needed for the available jobs in their area of interest. This will help students choose the education or training that best fits with their career goals. Planning is flexible as students' interests change, but starting the process earlier helps align high school courses and electives with a student's future plans. Many students are still preparing for a traditional four-year college or university, but many are discovering other paths to a career that pays well with little or no education debt. What's the best path to success? Knowing the options and choosing the path that's right for you. Learn more at BloomingtonSchools.org/careers.
Would you like me to take any questions or comments that you have?
Let's start with, did you get one?
We've seen this once or twice, and learned something from it every time. Is this considered a public service announcement that can go on our various public education or whatever channels, city channels, that, that we have to pay for anything for, or just give them to them and say, hey, play this at such, such a time?
Yeah, the answer is yes, and we, not only social media, but also BECTV.
I'm really encouraged to see this, because I know when I was running a year ago for this position, this was one of my concerns, and at the Bloomington Parade, I met a gentleman who was very much wanting us to push the fact that there are other careers that students can get into, he himself was in one of those careers. And so I think we've done our community a great service by you developing this, and I also believe, I heard that this was shown at, like, the orientation time to parents as well, because part of the job is we need to educate our parents about these options. In some community groups, it's just not quite accepted that you don't have to go to college. So I just really thank you for being progressive and moving forward with this, and I hope it will have a big impact, especially, you know, as years go by, so thank you.
Thank you, and you know, this is, our job is to help promote, market, and share the great work of our staff and our leadership group, who, they're really doing the heavy lifting, from Cheryl Martin and her work on the Personal Growth Plan, to Mr. Kubis and Mr. Melby's areas, and then working throughout the district. So our hope is, obviously, this is not the first, or this is not the only video we'll be doing in this area, we've got a number of ideas that we continue to discuss and germinate, and so when Mr. Sorum said this, you learn something new each time, so do we, we write notes, but it's a way to, you know, there's that old saying, is the more we see it, the more things we try to remember, so we're hoping that we continue to share it. We will be sharing this with the PTSA Council Wednesday. We'll also be inviting all of our PTAs to utilize the video in our pieces that we will share, not only in our school, but with our parent groups as well, so thank you.
Just, of course, and then to follow up on that, so each of the secondary schools has a copy or two of this.
Of the video?
Yeah, the videos that you can...
Yes, and it's available on our YouTube and at BloomingtonSchools.org/careers, you can find it there online as well.
Yeah, just want to say thank you, and I'm, to say that I'm very pleased with this, this idea, this initiative, and the work that has been put into it from all different areas in the administration, including your department. I like the new design and how the, our students, our student population is well reflected in the poster, in the new poster that we have. And when you say that this has been printed in different languages, my hope is that, in the same way it is promoted to all of our students, that they're able to see it as it is displayed in different buildings, that they're all able to see it in their languages as well, because that is important for them, not to only know about it and know that they're there, but to also see their, their faces there in, in connection with the languages that they speak and their culture. You know, it's very unfortunate that so many kids end up leaving college, and mostly, we know it is, because of financial reasons, you know, the cost is just unbelievable, and the lack of opportunities to really pay off all your debt is, we all know the story, but to give this kind of, to present this kind of opportunity to our families, and to know that it's not, that there's not only one way, it's, it's very important, but I also want to continue to encourage all of us to keep passing the message to our kids that it doesn't have to end there, that this is an option, and it is good to have options, because you never know what might happen in the future, but that it doesn't have to be the end, that it's only one step, as we all know, and you also clarified that during our retreat time. But this is also something that, you know, I really hope that resonates not only within us, because we all know that, but also that it's a message that goes to our, I mean, the rest of our administration, you know, principals and teachers as well, because that is important too. So thanks for this, for this work, this is encouraging.
Thank you, and you brought a comment that I should make note of, you know, we go through a lot of filters when we're putting things like this together, but one of them is that we always are looking at that there's multiple languages spoken in the district, and so when we create these opportunities, or these publications, or videos, or pieces, static pieces like the poster, and you see the large one here, both the Somali and Spanish one are, are being printed and coming as well, the, so that is a filter we always use, and the other important thing is that, and thanks to Ms. Dina Wade-Ardley and her team in the Office of Educational Equity, they gave us feedback with some of our original work, and with that feedback, we changed a number of original persons that were on our graphic to more genuinely reflect our student population. These are not our children, but they certainly represent our, our children throughout the district, so it is a team effort, and, and we think that's the best way, and the other comment you made, it is the hope that our leadership and our, all staff members will continue to share these types of opportunities, especially this project that we are, really want to get out to the community. Create that buzz, create the visual, as well as key messages across the district, so thank you.
And thank you for mentioning the... And thank you for mentioning the Office of Educational Equity in this work as well, because as much as we want to see our students reflected in a poster, it's important that we go beyond there and that we continue to work really hard for, with all of our students to make sure that this becomes an opportunity for all in that person.
I just wanted to thank you guys for putting the video together, because I think the more ways we can get the word out, the better, you know. There's been shortages in many of these jobs for a number of years, but for some reason, our families haven't heard that or haven't, you know, seen that those are options for their kids. So, I think it's a really good thing to put the video together so we can start, you know, getting people into careers, that there are openings that can be filled in. So, thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we'll move on to the District-Wide Achievement Report, and Dr. Huston.
Thank you, Chair Steiglaff, Superintendent Fujitake, and Board Directors. At this time of the year, we have the latest information from the Minnesota Department of Education on MCA, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, as well as the work that we did this summer in analyzing data from our MAP assessment. This, we will do a brief overview of the data that you already were able to see at the board retreat, and dig in a little bit more deeply on the new information related to the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment and the new accountability system. And so, as Deb pulls up the PowerPoint, I'd like to introduce my new colleague, Julio Caesar, who is the Research Evaluation Assessment Specialist for our department. We're a team of two now, and so, when you ask me really difficult questions, I'll say, "Julio, what do you think?" And he is a very talented statistician and analyst who really digs deep into the data. So, I'll refer to some of his work that we did this, this summer, and you'll hear more from Julio as we move throughout the year. So, this report, we call the Bloomington Public Schools District-Wide Achievement Report, but it does cover some things other than just reading and math. We'll start with demographic trends. So, you can see the demographic trends from 2014-15 to 2017-18. These are from the official October 1 enrollments. We can see that our percentage of students receiving free reduced-price lunch, which is our proxy for poverty, has increased to forty-one point four percent. That's a one point five percent increase from last year. Our special education percentage is up to thirteen point nine percent, also up one point five percent from last year. And our English language learner population is thirteen point two percent of the population, and that's up point eight from last year. So, when we talk about a challenge index later on in the report, the challenge index is adding up these three percentages together, and then we can compare schools to like schools in other districts, and we can compare our district results to similar districts as well. One of the indicators that kind of stood out this year was percentage of students in attendance at least ninety-five percent of the time. If a student was attending school, was enrolled for the whole school year, they could miss no more than eight school days to achieve this ninety-five percent. And we've found through analysis that we did five years ago, and then have repeated a number of times, that the, this percentage of students having attendance of no more than eight absent days correlates highly with achieving math goals. It also correlates with reading, but it's especially impactful for math, and we'll see some math results coming up, where we'll talk about the impact of attendance. We are also tracking, and we've got data going back to 2000, but I just showed the last four years, and our percentage of students who are suspended at least once in an out-of-school suspension decreased to two point seven percent. So, less than three out of a hundred students were suspended. Now, some of those students may have been suspended more than once, but this is the metric that we use to look at disproportion, and we'll get to that in just a minute. You can see that American Indian population has increased slightly, still below two percent of the population. Asian has dropped a little bit. Asian-American students are nine point four percent of the population. Hispanic students, eighteen percent. African-American, twenty-one point two. And white students now is less than fifty percent, it's forty-nine point seven percent. So, when we look specifically at this attendance variable, we can see that in elementary school, we had seventy-six point four percentage of students attending at least ninety-five percent of the days in 2013-14, and it's down to sixty-seven percent in 2017-18, with a two point two percent drop in just the last year. We can see similarly that we were very steady with attendance in high school, at about sixty-one, sixty-two percent, but then we saw a seven-point decrease in the percentage of students in high school attending. Fortunately, we saw in middle school an increase, so they're up, you know, a little bit more than a point from last year. But when we look at these data and correlate them with achievement, we see this impact of attendance on achievement. We also look at racial/ethnic differences in attendance. We see that by far, the highest attending group is Asian-American students, with seventy-four point five percent of the students attending ninety-five percent of possible days. White students are at fifty-eight, down about eleven points from last year. Each of the racial/ethnic groups saw a decrease from last year, and overall, we went from sixty-six point seven percent to fifty-three point eight. So, this is an area of concern. It's one, it's a factor that some parts of it are malleable, or you can have an impact on. Some parts aren't. So, flu season is something that we have no control over. But for those kinds of attendance concerns related to, you know, showing up late to school or not catching the bus at all, we can work with families and with individual students to increase that percentage. This breaks out the attendance by free and reduced-price lunch, and EL, English Language Learner Status, and Special Ed Status. And you can see that each of these subgroups as well showed a decrease over the last, I'm sorry, this is comparing elementary to middle to high school. And you can see elementary does have higher overall attendance than high school. It's high school where the problem has the biggest concern. We go to suspensions next, and these are just the suspensions that are out of school, where the student is, is not allowed to stay in the school. There are in-school suspensions, and we analyze both out-of-school and in-school. But this is the, these are the data that the State Department of Human Rights is most interested in working with Bloomington Public Schools and schools across the state to try to decrease the disproportion of suspensions between African-American, American Indian, Hispanic students, and other students. So, this latest data from 2017-18 showed that two point seven percent of all students were suspended at least once. But we had, for African-American students, it was five point seven. So, it's a little bit more than twice the average rate for African-American students. But we did see a big decline in both African-American and American Indian suspensions compared to the previous year. The previous year, overall, we had three point three percent of the students suspended, and I suppose I could point at it if I had my pointer going. Whoops, sorry. There's three point three percent here, and you can see that African-American last year was seven point six percent, and American Indian was seven point five percent. So, even though there's disproportion still, and we're working hard on trying to make sure that we, as much as possible, decrease those African-American and American Indian suspensions, we did decrease a lot this year. So, this is something my colleague Eric Melby is working with a team, and he can answer questions about what strategies are being used to prevent suspensions and what kinds of options there are, other than out-of-school suspensions. But I'm going to just keep track of these numbers for each school and for the district as a whole, so we can see how the trends are going. Next, we get to the MAP. MAP stands for Measures of Academic Progress. It's a fairly unique type of test in that each student is measured on items that are roughly at their ability level. So, in a third-grade classroom, if some students are reading at the sixth-grade level, they'll get sixth-grade-type passages, and if students are reading at the first-grade level, they'll get first-grade-type passages. And so, as the students get more answers correct, they're going to get a hard question that they just can't get right, and then it'll revert to an easier question. And then, the way the scoring works, and Julio knows all the mathematics behind this, but I give the analogy of the Olympic diving. It's the degree of difficulty of the dive plus the execution that comes up with the total points. In this case, if a student takes lots of really hard items above grade level, they're going to end up with a total score that's above grade level. And if they take items that are below grade level, they'll do well, they'll get about half the answers right, but they'll get a low overall score. And this score actually ends up predicting the MCA test as well or better than the MCA does, because it has very little measurement error involved in the score, and the kids are motivated, they don't give up on the test. You know, with the old on-grade-level tests with the bubble sheets, we used to find children underneath the desks crying because the test was too difficult. Or you'd have kids that were really sharp, rush through the test in ten minutes and make some, you know, unfortunate mistakes on the test. So, either way, kids at the margins aren't tested appropriately with an on-grade-level test. An adaptive test like this is far superior. And the state test has moved to being an adaptive test, but it by law can only adapt within grade level, it can't go above grade level. So, it's improvement, but it still has that kind of difficulty with it. For the MAP test, you can see that in reading, I think I've mentioned this every time I presented, that we kind of shoot for fifty percent or higher for each of the grade levels and for each of the subgroups. Fifty percent would be the national norm. Half of the national norm is above and half below. And we did see this year that we were above fifty percent for every single one of the grade levels, with the highest grade level being grade nine, where sixty-seven point two percent of the students made, hit their growth targets. Overall, for the district, we did see a decline of two and a half points from fifty-eight point two to, excuse me, fifty-five point six percent. And we saw some, some, you know, grade levels with a bigger drop, like grade four went from fifty-nine point nine to fifty point three. We've shared these data with all the school teams, the grade-level teams, and individual teachers have gotten their own classroom data, so that they can see what were the strengths and weaknesses for their individual students, as well as the class as a whole. For the board presentation, we just kind of keep it at this high level. In addition to breaking out the data by grade, we break it out by racial/ethnic category, free and reduced-price lunch, English language learner status, and Special Ed status. And here you do see that we have a couple of the subgroups that are below fifty percent. Hispanic students are really close, forty-nine point four percent of the students hit their reading growth targets. White students are close to sixty percent. EL students were at forty-eight percent, and special education students dropped from fifty to forty-eight percent. But by and large, the data are quite similar to previous years. We do see a reduction overall from fifty-eight point eight to fifty-five point seven, but this is, you know, something that can vary from year to year. When we get to the mathematics data, oh, here's the reading goal. We were at fifty-eight point two percent of the students in 2017 hitting their national growth targets. We set an ambitious goal to go up to sixty-one point two, but instead, we dropped to fifty-five point seven. So, this year, we didn't hit our Q-Cop goal with the state. And then, when we look at mathematics, this is, this is the area that we showed the biggest decline. And this is mathematics growth, it's not proficiency. It's the amount of learning that takes place from last spring to this spring, or in the case of grades one and two, from last fall to this spring. And so, we see some of the grade levels very similar to last year. Grade one was sixty-two point four. Grade five was fifty-eight point zero, with a little bit of decline, grade nine from sixty-six percent to sixty-three. But we saw big drops in grades two, four, and six in mathematics. And so, we, you know, we set about to try to figure out what were the factors that were causing the decline in mathematics on the MAP test. And with a sophisticated, multi-level design that Julio put together, we looked at student factors and classroom factors. Well, the student factors that were by far the most impactful on these math scores were attendance. And we saw, we saw that big drop in attendance for elementary. Well, that likely produced some of this drop in math scores. The other factor was the amount of time students took taking the test. And we got reports from principals that there were kids that were speeding through the test at rates that were, I think, disturbing to the teachers and to the principals. While we went in and got the times for each student, how long did they take on the math MAP test, and we found, yes, indeed, there was a big decline from last year, and that it varied from school to school a little bit, but overall, when Julio did the analysis, he found this was also a significant factor in the math, so drop of the math test. So, these are two factors that we can work with students on. Attendance for sure, and just telling students to take their time, you know, work through the questions if you don't know the answer, you know, work down to two possible answers, and then end up guessing. And if you guess wrong, you'll get an easier question the next time. If you guess right, you get a harder question. But to take their time in the test. And so, all of the school teams have been apprised of this research and are working also on the environment, to make sure the environment is one where students are going to take the test seriously. So, students have good light, and they have good seating and desks or tables, etc., etc. So, we want to make sure that students treat the test as seriously as possible. We're also, especially in the middle school, going to show them those pathway graphs, where students can see if they're on track for two-year college, four-year college, or select four-year college, to get them to buy in a little bit with the progress indicators. And in previous research, they found that students graphing their own data actually can impact their achievement. So, I think those are strategies that we're going to put in place, along with, of course, we have a brand-new elementary curriculum. Half of the teachers started with it last year, the other half are going to get it this year, and we want to make sure that everybody understands, you know, how the curriculum relates to the standards, and that we make sure to do a good job in implementing the curriculum the way it's supposed to be. Again, that's my colleague Andy's, Bailey Wick, and if you have any questions, I'm going to throw them over to Andy. So, then the MAP growth is also broken up by racial/ethnic. You can see that all racial/ethnic groups dropped in mathematics. The group that has the highest overall performance is Asian students again, with white students at fifty-six, Asians at fifty-seven. with white students at fifty six, Asians at fifty seven. Hispanic and African American students have lower growth rates as well as American Indian. So this is where you see the gap increasing. So as certain groups of students of color grow less, then the overall gaps increase. Free and reduced lunch was down about five points, EL about eight point two, and special ed just down a little bit. So this is our challenge is to make this a one-year turnaround on the math scores and see that we can make sure that all students are doing as well as they possibly can. Any questions about the MAP and the attendance and suspensions before we move to the MCA test?
Okay, Mr. Bergstrom.
First of all, David, thanks for bringing this information to us and sharing it with us. I'm seeing a common theme and the theme is attendance. So you had mentioned early on, you don't have to go back to the slide, I'm looking at the one that says at ninety five percent of possible days, then there were some slides. You had mentioned a few reasons, you know, maybe they missed the bus or they were sick. Are we, do we have any reliable data that says, that fills in the blanks, excuse me, for the other reasons? Why are these students missing more than eight days a year? And is there anything that we can do as the district to maybe help those numbers come up?
Yeah, thank you, Director Bergstrom. There are, most of my information is anecdotal. And I would, I know that Dr. Melby is working with a team to identify those areas that can be put in place for prevention of attendance problems. You know, there are programs like PBIS that deal with social behaviors and social behaviors are linked to attendance problems. We're working with the Search Institute on relationships. Teacher-student relationships, student-to-student relationships. And we're going to be analyzing to see if any of the factors that are in their survey really predict whether you're going to have higher attendance the next year or not and whether you can change those things. So those are things that we're exploring. Dr. Melby, would you like to add anything about the possible reasons for attendance problems?
Well, we continue to study the reasons like Dr. Heisman said. And we had some work started last year on student attendance. A couple of buildings put some big efforts into it and saw some good results. Julie Campadelli, who just happens to be sitting in the audience tonight, I think, working on her administrative clock hours is my guest, is in the Learning Sports Department and has helped craft an attendance plan that we're planning this year with all buildings to, in an effort to improve attendance. So there's, you know, it's a hard question to answer because there's a lot of reasons for attendance issues. But focusing attention on that, reaching out earlier and often to families who are having attendance issues. Julie's doing her clock hour, so I won't put her on the spot. We could come in at some point and talk a little bit more about that and get a little further down the road.
Good thing, I know sometimes the easiest questions have the hardest answers. So there's a lot behind the scenes of, it's not just somebody that doesn't want to get out of bed. You know, why don't they want to, what are the motivating factors? But if we can get them here ninety five percent or more, we have, they have a lot better chance.
Better chance.
We have a better chance of helping them and they have a better chance of getting through, so.
Thank you. Director Beebe?
Based on, based on the importance of attendance, how does our district rate compare to those other districts around us? I'm just curious to know if there were other factors that were similar, reducing their attendance rates.
Madam Chair and Director Beebe, I've just been analyzing the new data that came out from the Minnesota Department of Education. Now, they've set their standard at ninety percent attendance. And we look really good compared to other districts on how few of our students are attending less than ninety percent of the time. Those would be your chronically truant students. So I think we're doing really well with chronically truant students. But it's that kind of range from like ninety to ninety five percent that if we could find the reasons, the factors that are malleable other than, you know, sickness, flu season that we can't control, then I think we could have an impact on that ninety five percent. We happen to be, Minneapolis used to report out at ninety five percent when Carol Johnson was superintendent there and we would do that analysis every year. I don't think they're reporting out at ninety five anymore, they're reporting out at ninety percent. So we will do some studies to identify schools or districts that are beating the odds in this attendance data. Right now, they only have one year of data available for us. But when we get some growth information on attendance, then we can maybe identify some neighboring school districts who we want to talk to about what they're doing. And I do have a group of assessment colleagues that meet once a month. And that is an area that I'd like to bring up with them and see if we can learn from some of those other districts. Thank you.
We still, the state still uses those eight categories for identifying students, classifying students.
Yes, Director Saram. It used to be we'd report out by five indicators. But you will see on these five racial, ethnic categories that there are now eight. The additional categories, wait a minute, there are seven. The additional two categories is multiple races and Pacific Islander. So Pacific Islander is separated out from Asian Pacific Islander. So what happens is from now on, we'll be reporting MCA data in those seven categories. And a lot of the students who were in the category of American Indian were biracial. So, you know, more than half of the students have moved into the multiple race category. So we will be establishing a new baseline with those eight categories. And we'll be trying to, when Julio and I do analyses, we first control for demographic factors. So we're not making a big deal about differences between schools because of demographic factors. And then we put in these other factors that are malleable. And so you control for poverty, special ed, EL status, and demographics. And then you find out if attendance over and above those things produces an effect, so.
But then we still have the free and reduced lunch and ELL and special ed.
Yes.
So eventually there's going to be ten.
Yeah, and you have to hit your targets in all ten areas. And a preview of the accountability system is that they now calculate your proficiency based on all of those categories, they average them. Even if you have ninety percent of your population are white students, they don't get weighted ninety percent. Each group gets weighted the same. And so it's emphasizing equity, trying to make sure that all your groups are proficient on these tests. So there is a difference in the way that we'll be calculating some of these indicators.
And some might fall into one or two categories then. And so do they choose which category they want to be tested in?
Yeah, so in the racial, ethnic categories, the seven categories, you're only in one. But in poverty, EL, and special ed, you could be in all three or in just one. And so it's a duplicate count when you, so when we add those percentages together to come up with a challenge index, schools can be over a hundred percent because they could have fifty percent EL, twenty percent special ed, and sixty percent free and reduced price lunch. So those are duplicate counts and they will continue to be with the federal accountability system. These are great questions.
Okay, Madam Chair, this is almost like the Supreme Court nominee thing that I have ten minutes that I can ask questions, right? And so.
Oh, you're really going to be tough on me.
When we show a chart like this, the third grade students in two thousand thirteen will become fourth grade students the next year, fifth grade students the next year. So if you look at it diagonally, you can see some interesting percentages of increase, decrease, whatever.
Yeah, Director Saram, it is an interesting way to look at things. If we had no mobility at all, you could just do that, you know, you could just look. But since we have quite a bit of mobility, they're not all the same students. But if you have a really low cohort that's going through, you can sometimes see, oh, gosh, these guys were low last year in third grade, they're low again in fourth grade, and next year they'll probably be low in fifth grade. Fortunately, we can impact that with our growth, if kids make more growth. But if you have a cohort graduating from your fifth grade in an elementary school that's really high and you've got a cohort of third graders coming in that's really low, all of a sudden your proficiency goes way down, even if your growth was high. So doing that kind of cohort analysis is really an interesting way of looking at things. So next I'd like to talk about the MCA reading. Yes, please, Tom?
We still have, oh, Director Corman has a question and then Director Bennett. Director Corman's been waiting.
Yeah, I've been waiting. Okay, well, I do have like a million questions, but we'll go one by one. So just looking at the numbers, it's really concerning to see how this is just across all groups, all different groups, including those groups that we would not have been as concerned in the past. So question number one, did you look at the, talking about cohorts, the DA students, did you notice any decrease there?
When we looked at the concentration of DA students at Ridgeview, well, we saw a little bit of decline but not very much. We haven't done a comprehensive analysis of DA across the board. It's an interesting phenomenon when you're identified as a gifted student. When you're tested again, your score is likely to go down. So students that are really high are going to regress to the mean. And students who are really low are going to regress the opposite way. So special needs students will test higher the next time they test. So we have to account for that regression effect. And I'm sure that Julio and I can design a study to look at the DA population itself and come back to you at a later time to tell you what we found out.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know more about what happened there.
Yeah, it's hard to find a comparison group because, you know, we don't have the data from other districts that have DA programs. So we do the best we can to try to model to see if students made as much growth as they have in the past.
And I don't like to compare, but now that you mention other districts too, do you happen to have any more information on what are the results for other school districts?
Yeah, in fact, at the, near the end of this presentation, I have five or six districts with similar demographic factors and how we did in terms of growth and proficiency on the MCAs. So that's a coming attraction. I won't tell you right now.
So then my other question would be probably more directed towards Dr. Melby and this is something that you can respond to later. But I'd be curious to know more about the attendance policy. You know, what steps are taken in each building? Or, you know, if it's elementary schools or middle schools or high schools in terms of, you know, when a student has not been coming to school for a number of days, is there a specific procedure that is followed? Not only the one that we do through Hennepin County, but also are there any steps that teachers take or administration take to prevent to get too far? So that's another question I had. And then could there be any factors that are associated with any changes in instruction or in the way that we're doing things in the district in the past year that could have probably affected those results? Just another question out there for you. You don't have to respond to that right now. But I'd be curious to know if there's anything else that's out there that we could be learning from? And then also to know more about, what is the opinion of the teachers about this kind of results? Is there anything that they're saying, you know, that we could, something we can learn from them? Since they are the ones who are directly working with the students, you know, is there anything they noticed while they worked with the students that could have affected those results and that could make sense, you know, why it went so down? So I would, I'd be really, really interested in knowing the opinion of the teachers about that.
Director Bennett, thank you for waiting.
I had a couple of questions, but most of them have been asked already, so that's a good thing. So my last question was, when you're looking at the total for both the reading and the MAP, and you're going back for the past four years, we see a trend where it's higher, lower, higher, lower?
Yes.
And I wonder if you and Julio, when you're looking through the data, if you've been able to find out why that trend exists? Do you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I see, Director Bennett, there is something that technically speaking, I call bounce, which has changed from year to year that I have seen when I've worked with schools in Minneapolis and the district report too, where we tend to have a really high year followed by a somewhat lower year. And, you know, it's really difficult to know for sure what is responsible for it. But the analysis that we did in math is the most sophisticated analysis that I've seen to try to come up with the factors that were associated with the drop in math from last year to this year. And there we, I think we identified attendance and test taking. And we also identified that teachers that were in service for a large period of time during the year tended to have lower math scores too. So those were the factors that came out of the analysis. To really know for sure, you have to do causal random assignment studies, you know, which we're not about to do. But we can be pretty sure that it's not a simple answer to any of these questions. It's usually a multiple, multiple factor kind of situation.
Does that pattern still exist when you look back ten years or more than this is four? That it's higher, lower, higher, lower, that same trend?
No, I didn't see that same trend. From the data from two thousand on, there were significant dips certain years, especially with some schools. But overall, the trend was relatively stable. So the one outlier, I think, from the data that I've seen in the past was the drop in math this year from fifty eight to fifty one. A two or three point increase or decrease seems to be fairly normal from looking at trends in the past. But this was a bigger drop than I'd seen with previous districts and schools. So it's something that we're taking very seriously. Yeah, so when you come to the MCAs now, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, they're an on-grade level test and students have to really be performing above grade level to be proficient. We've found through our equating studies that you have to be at about the sixtieth or sixty-fifth percentile on national norms to be considered proficient. So when people, you know, say that this is a minimum standards test, well, it may be in Texas, but it isn't in Minnesota. As far as I know, the only other state that has higher standards than Minnesota is Massachusetts. There have been studies, linking studies with the NAEP and stuff. So we have very high standards, but still we have the ambition that all students reach proficiency. And so that's why we monitor growth, to see how fast they're getting towards proficiency. But what I'm going to share with you are the proficiency scores for reading, which are down a little bit from fifty nine point seven percent proficient last year to fifty eight for reading. But that's, you know, like a two-point difference. And the grade level that dropped the most was seventh grade from sixty point four to fifty two point seven. And, you know, each of the grade levels declined except for eighth grade, where it went from fifty five point three percent to fifty nine point four. So this is kind of in the typical range of scores. And we also saw that the state of Minnesota declined a little bit. They went from sixty one point four to sixty one point one. So we declined more than the state did, but it's about a two-point decline. When we go to reading proficiency by racial, ethnic group, you see that there is this big gap in proficiency between white American students and Hispanic, African American, American Indian. And you also see that free and reduced lunch is at about forty percent proficient. EL and special ed, by definition, if you hit your MCA targets, you're likely to lose your ELL label or your special ed label. So those are, tend to be lower. But they're fairly stable, thirty-three point seven percent for special ed last year and thirty-two percent this year. Ten to twelve percent for EL. So, these reading scores are, you know, a little bit lower than we wanted to see, but not dramatically so. When we look at the reading by grade level, this seems to be same graph with different colors. I like the colors. I think somebody mentioned that we needed to have links colors, and so I did a redesign on this particular graph, but I think it's redundant. So, now we go to math. Math, we saw a two points, two, two and a half point, no, about a one and a half point decrease at the state level, but a four point decrease at the district. So, both in MAP and MCA tests, we saw this decline in mathematics. And when we look at it by grade, we saw a large decline in fourth grade and fifth grade. We also saw a decline in seventh grade. In eighth grade, the scores went up, eleventh grade, they were quite stable. So, you can see there's differences by grade level. And then by racial ethnic group, you can see that white American and Asian American students were pretty high in terms of proficiency on the math at sixty plus percent, and that Hispanic students were at twenty-five percent, and African American at twenty-eight point three. American Indian students actually have been maintaining at forty or fifty percent on the math, much higher than the reading, which is interesting. So, these are the data for proficiency. But the state also produces information on MCA growth. And unfortunately, the new accountability system doesn't take into account of it. But I want to share it with you because it shows positive growth indicators for, for reading, better than the state. Now, this is a graph that I did before, a couple of years ago, that just shows the correlation between the challenge index and the proficiency in reading. And you can practically predict each district's percent proficiency in reading if you just know the challenge index. So, you can see there's a huge correlation between the challenge index and proficiency. I'm going to redo this graph with all schools with this, this year's data to show that it's, it's still the same, and it's probably even a higher correlation with, for mathematics. So, we're going to use the challenge index to try to identify similar districts to Bloomington, and then look at both achievement, proficiency, and growth. Now, here's growth for reading. This growth model was the initial growth model that, that the commissioner asked me to chair a team, and Jim Angermeyer was on the team and other colleagues from other districts. We came up with a real simple growth model that was, students either made high growth, low growth, or medium growth. And the way it was standardized was that thirty-one percent of the students would be in high growth, thirty-one percent in low growth. And if you have higher high growth and you do low growth, you're doing well. And so, the state has, has two percent higher high growth than low growth, and, and Bloomington has three percent higher. And so, so in terms of how much learning took place, from third to fourth, from fourth to fifth, from fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh, and seventh to eighth, Bloomington did better than the state norms. So, I think this is something that I want to continue to show in addition to the proficiency because growth really indicates the impact of your instruction. So, in this case, the impact of our instruction in reading is positive. But we do see in math that we have higher low growth. The state does too. So, the state actually made less progress on the math test than you would like to see, and the district made less growth than what you would like to see. So, on MCA growth, math again is the area for, for improvement. So, then I found the comparable districts. There's one to add to this, for some reason I, I neglected to put Enver Grove Heights into this graphic. Enver Grove Heights has a challenge index of sixty-four percent, and they were lower than the, the district in both reading proficiency and reading growth. They were the same as the district in math proficiency, but higher than Bloomington in math growth. And then you can see West St. Paul, lower on reading growth, but higher on math growth. So, and, and almost all, all the cases except for South St. Paul, the math growth was higher in the comparison districts. The reading growth was quite comparable across these districts. So, so we, it just reinforced, all the data seemed to converge on this notion that we could do better in math, we, we've identified some factors, we can make progress. We have a new curriculum that we need to learn exactly how to instruct, you know, towards the standards with this new curriculum, and we need to make sure that when we're testing students, it's the best possible environment, and then have an impact on attendance. And I think we can see both the MAP math growth and the MCA math growth increase. Lastly, I want to just, at a very high level, talk about the North Star Accountability System. North Star Accountability System got, got rid of the, the MCA growth model, which was disappointing. But the positive aspects of it is that it's got a multiple measure index that includes attendance, and, and it includes progress for EL students. And this is a big factor. Now, they use the access test for EL students to determine whether students are on a trajectory to be proficient. And then you get credit for all the students that are, made the kind of growth that would put them on, on, on the trajectory. And then they identify schools that were especially high on factors like proficiency, EL growth, or attendance. And we had eight of our schools that were identified as showing exceptional indicators of progress. For Hillcrest and Indian Mounds, they were high for EL student progress. For Olson Middle, they were high on math and reading progress for Asian students especially. For Indian Mounds, Normandale Hills, Oak Grove Middle, Olson Middle, Ridgeview, Valley View Middle, and Westwood, they were high on, on attendance for Asian students. So, Asian students across the board have the highest attendance in Bloomington, and they also compare to other districts, Asian students are doing really well, especially in these schools. Attendance for African American students was identified for Hillcrest and Normandale Hills, and multi-race was Hillcrest again, and then EL attendance was Westwood. So, we had eight schools that were on the list of being in the top five percent of their category for this accountability system. Then, we have no schools in comprehensive improvement. Our three high poverty schools were identified at the first level of analysis, which is just proficiency. But then when they looked at progress across time, they did well enough to not be identified, and then the attendance was high enough. So, there, so there are three different levels to this funnel. The first is just proficiency, second is progress, and the third is attendance. And if you fall through all of those, then you get identified as a school in need of intensive assistance. And most of those schools are in St. Paul and Minneapolis. So, they're going to get help from the Department of Education. The only, you know, thing that I'm really disappointed with, with the accountability system is that we worked hard to have a seven-year graduation be calculated and put on the report card, but the state is not using that seven-year graduation for accountability. They're using the four-year graduation. And for special ed students who can stay in the system until they're twenty-one years of age, it doesn't make any sense to use a four-year graduation rate. So, all three of our high schools, Choice, Jefferson, and Kennedy were identified for comprehensive support simply because their special ed population had a graduation rate below sixty-seven percent. And it's just not fair. So, there are forty high schools in the state with similar situations. They had enough special ed students to be in the accountability system, and they were low, below sixty-seven percent. So, so if anybody brings that up, I would just say it's an unfair indicator. Talk to Dave, because he's done to tell people how unfair it is. So, that's, that's my report. I'm, I'm sorry it took so long, but I thought it was a good idea to cover the MCAs and accountability indicators, as well as the MAP indicators that you had seen before. And if there are further questions, I'd be glad to take it.
Thank you for that. And welcome Julio, and we'll look forward to some of those other reports that Dave just didn't have time to do for me.
That's right. You have two guys working on every report.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I think by the amount of questions you had, you realized that it didn't, it didn't take too long, that we were just very interested, so thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I do hope to follow up with any other questions that I can answer with Julio's help, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to board members' reports, who would like to go first?
I'll take your stab at it.
All right.
Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to fill in for the chair. I, I am the alternate for the PTSA council meeting. That was the first one of the year. They spoke about things like where do your dues go, PTA basics. There was a PTA roster update, and then meeting schedules and topics. And just a quick word of thanks to all of our PTSA reps and the PTA reps for the individual schools, for all the work that they do. We, we would not be as robust as we are without our volunteers. I had an opportunity to go to Washburn Elementary for their all-school assembly. It was just a, a lot of fun to meet all the students, all the staff. They, they were in desperate need of somebody to take a picture, so I brought my camera and my ladder, and we went outside on the yard, and we, we got to, got to have a silly face, and then they all quieted down, and we got a, a fun face, so I'm hoping that the pictures turned out. But they all had their, their school spirit blue shirts on. So, it was, the playground or the, the field was awash with Washburn blue. Lots of fun. Had the opportunity to attend the first day of school for Jefferson. Nice to see so many smiles. I just sort of stood at the front door and greeted people as they came in, and just about every one of them had a smile on their face. Some of them were wiping sleep out of their eyes. But it was nice to see students and staff alike with great big smiles. I think I'll go, you know, I'll have to go back in six weeks, and we'll see if those smiles still exist. But it's also nice to see all the remodeling. We did some tweaking to the cafeteria, and that was really nice. I talked to some of the, the people in the, in the kitchen just to sort of see what their thoughts were, and, and what, how they, how they saw that going forward, how it would be used. And everything was positive. Of course, it was the first day, so, just, it was a lot of fun. Also, I, I, I went over my notes for the last, last meeting, and I saw that I didn't mention this. It is that time, school started, buses are on the roads. What that means is please stop. Don't just slow down, don't creep by when that stop sign goes out and those red lights are flashing. That's the same as a red light. So, you wouldn't just roll through a red light at an intersection. This is just the same. If I'm not mistaken, a ticket for rolling through that is five hundred dollars. It went from two fifty to five hundred a couple of years back. I hope nobody ever has to have one of those tickets on their record. I believe it's a moving violation. But beyond the fact that it costs money, we don't want anyone to get hurt. So, those of you that are watching, I know that the thirteen, fourteen folks that are up tonight, you know, spread the word, the buses are on the route, on the, on the routes. We want to make sure the kids are safe, the, the students and the staff. We're all looking out for them. So, please take an extra five minutes, budget that into your, into your day. Don't go late, don't drive fast, make sure that you're paying attention always, but extra special attention when we get to our schools. And I'll end my report there, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that I have sent you an email with three different documents that are kind of the highlights of the last couple of meetings for AMSD, and I thought you might find them interesting. One of them is related to the Cruz-Guzman lawsuit. If you remember, this is one that was filed by seven families from Minneapolis and St. Paul back in two thousand fifteen. It went to the Hennepin County District Court, and they determined that it was not in their hands to make a decision. So, it was sent to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court decided that that was not in their hands this time either, that it's more legislature-type of decision, it needs to be made right there at that level. And so, it was sent back to, to the, to the Hennepin County court, right? So, if you want to read more and see what's happening, this has been going on since two thousand fifteen, hasn't been resolved. It affects directly the Minneapolis and St. Paul schools, and it is about schools being segregated, and what they say is that schools are more segregated now than they were back in the seventies. And so, so say that all schools and education should be free from racial segregation and discrimination. Even though this is Minneapolis-St. Paul, it would affect us as school district because our, our district is one of the districts that have been mentioned in that lawsuit. And if any decisions are made by the legislators, it will directly affect us, where they will have total control of what steps we should take in, in regards to this situation. So, take a look at that, that's an, an interesting document. I sent you the, the whole document that MSD had compiled. It's a lot of reading, but it's interesting. And then the other one is ways to engage Minnesota House candidates this fall. So, different tips to talk to your legis, possibly future legislators about issues related to education. And then the last one, it's a PowerPoint presentation that was given by the Morris Letterman Company. So, as you know, those are always very interesting. This is one that was, the results of a last survey that was given to, was that eleven hundred people across Minnesota, just random people? So, take a look at that too, please, and let me know if you have any questions, or if you have any questions. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was able to go to the first Kennedy football game, and they worked really hard. There was a really fantastic play where they got one touchdown, and that was great, so I want to cheer them on. This Friday, there will be a ceremony at halftime for the Kennedy Hall of Fame athletes. And we want to acknowledge those people that have been very significant in sports in our schools in the past. I had a wonderful first day of school with Olson Elementary, and went to the new kindergarten parent breakfast, and did some community engagement. Really enjoyed seeing parents out that really care about their kids, care about the teachers, wanted to volunteer. They had the best sign-up for volunteers they'd had in a long time, so that was very encouraging to them on the PTA. So, really enjoy, looking forward to being in the schools more. And also, on the twenty-fifth, there will be a hearing at the Capitol on elementary to twelfth grade education issues. So, that's something else, you can contact us if you're interested in going, and I have the information to pass on to others.
Anyone else?
Oh, I had a chance to visit Kennedy High School on the first day of school, and it was interesting that Director Bertham said that they looked so happy, because that was the thing that I noticed too. All the students looked so happy to be back, and the staff looked so happy, and I was even there at the end of the day, and they were still happy. The other thing I did- The other thing I did there, I'm not sure what their job title is, but I got to spend some time walking with kind of like the hall monitor security person, and walking the hall, and like going through and checking the locker room, and making sure that all the students were where they were supposed to be. So that was an interesting experience, kind of shadowed that person, followed him around. Then on Wednesday, in the AM, I went to Westwood Elementary, which I got to do one of my favorite things, is walk some of the lost students to their classroom and help them find their room because they didn't know where to go, so that's one of my favorite things to do in the first day. And then in the afternoon, I went to Poplar Bridge, and they had their first rally, or all-school rally, that day. And one of the interesting things that I thought they did was really nice there is all the students are sitting on the floor, and all the staff stands around the room, and everybody goes around and introduces themselves and welcomes the students, so it was kind of a welcome-to-our-school type of rally, so it was very nice. Thank you.
Seven times.
Thank you. I have two things. First, our school year is off to a great start, thanks to staff, our parents, and our students for their part in making this a successful beginning. Special recognition and appreciation to Mayor Winsted for joining me in greeting students and parents as they arrived at Westwood Elementary for the first day of school. Good news to report, the American Geography Society has named Jefferson High School Social Studies teacher Sarah Adal Wyland a 2018 Geography Teacher Fellow. She's one of only 50 teachers selected from across the country for this honor, and this is the 30th year of this program, so great news. Congratulations.
Do you think we could get her to come to a future meeting?
Right, sure. And that's my team's report. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other business to come up with the board? All right. None, so this meeting is adjourned.